To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, first thing on agenda is investment policy.
I do have a couple of other items that we'll add to the end and just because it's us, it can be kind of informal if there's conversation about whatever else is upcoming or needs to be, we can do that as well.
What do you need to add?
What's that?
What's that? What do you, what are you going to add?
Just updates on the candidate filings.
Okay.
And updates on the department head interviews are the other, they're the things that I have for conversation.
Sure.
And they're just, they're just timely housekeeping items, not, not broad topics.
Okay. Talk more about that then. Okay. Well, have a word, have at it.
So the investment policy and investment strategy are two different things. The investment policy is relatively, the proposed changes are very administrative in nature, just some terminology and being, being much more consistent with GFOA template policies so that it reads in the same order. If you, if you took a look at the two policies side by side, the 2017 approved policy, which Ellers took a look at that and said, hey, I give you a B plus, that's almost exactly right. But there's a few things that are just slightly out of order from the way that the current one is, is reading from GFOA Government Finance Officer Association. So what we're basically presenting is the, is the GFOA template with the Hubbard County specific details in it. There's some updating of terminology. I don't even think legally there's anything that was wrong with the last one. It's just so that it reads much more like people would expect it to because when a Finance Officers Association puts out a sample policy, everybody just kind of adopts it and moves with it so that they all read the same and they're not, they're not the same, or they're, so...
Even the 2017 policy states that this policy shall be reviewed from time to time. County Board must adopt any changes to this policy. So it's, we're just doing what the former policy says.
Yep. And there's, and then, and all of the adjustments in the six-year period are, like I said, very administrative. There's a couple of things that this says. One is, it says that the Board is transferring the responsibility and authority for the county's investments to the auditor, right? Because things need to do, things need to be done quickly, they need to be done, they can't be done by committee. So we have this policy to inform that, that identifies that primarily we are, we are concerned with obviously the safety of, of the principal of our funds, the security of the principal of our funds. We're concerned with cash flow, making sure that we can pay the bills every week and every month. And then the third one is yield, right? If you're investing for investing sake, your primary concern might be yield over time, right? You can lose some now to win some later. We can't do that. We're also not investing to invest, right? We're not investing for a future idea. We're investing because in our, in our budget, we've put interest earnings as a revenue source that we're planning on using to balance the budget this year. So Kay and I were having a conversation. She said, we'll just, we'll invest it and then at the end of it, we'll just turn it back into investment. I'm like, okay, when do we cash out? Because we said we're, we're putting $400,000 of interest earnings against our operating expenses for the year. She said, oh yeah, we gotta, we gotta cash some out. I'm like, okay. We can balance over the period of time and make sure that we're, that we're doing that. Pooling of funds, generally it says that we're gonna pool the funds that we can because a larger portfolio will have a better earning capacity than a bunch of individual ones. And then we're gonna diversify. So we're gonna pool and diversify, which means we're doing opposite things at the same time and creating, creating tension like that. All of these risk issues obviously are, where everything is insured and everything is invested in ways where you can't lose your, your principal and that your interest is guaranteed. Now, that means you're, you're earning at a lower rate than you could possibly given certain markets, but you're never risking anything. Liquidity, which of these investments can we, can we access if we have an emergency? Now, we really shouldn't have emergencies, right? We know from month to month and year to year that we're, we need about $3 million of, of cash on hand to operate on a monthly basis. And then we've got other cash coming in. And then we have our big projects, like when we're approving a road project and we're gonna write a check for two and a half million dollars, well then, then we plan for that. We know that's coming up and we, we make those things happen. So obviously liquidity is, is a consideration. Here's the delegation of authority piece. In this bit about authorized financial dealers, the county has already engaged an advisor and a broker. And the question at hand is gonna be, how much of our investment portfolio are we gonna, are we gonna land over there with the investment broker? And how much are we gonna maintain locally and local control of and local investment of? Now, the broker will advise us on even the funds we invest locally to help us improve our yield and to balance our cash flow and those things. So they are our broker for all of our funds and all of our purposes, even though funds that they don't have under management. Internal controls and prudence are just parts that are checked all the time. Collateralization obviously is necessary. I think the rest of it is relatively, relatively straightforward. Are there questions about the investment policy update? Cause otherwise we'll review that and bring that forward to a future meeting.
I have one. I was thinking about, it sounds like it's the desire of the Board to have some money invested locally. And since this is a policy, I'm just wondering how that could be mentioned in the policy. But at the same time, we wanna have competitive bids from those locally. You don't wanna just say, well, we gotta have a certain percentage and no matter what. Well, we don't wanna have that. I mean, how can that be written in the policy? That'd be, the goal is to have some locally, but at the same time not obligate to it.
So I would, I would not put it in the policy. The policy says you're delegating authority to the auditor to invest the funds. The strategy is the piece where you have a conversation about how to balance the investments. And that is not as formal as the policy and that is kind of a lot more, we're gonna, that's, that's the meat of this conversation is the strategy piece of it and finding the, the right balance on, on that. And there really isn't a formal, it's more of an understanding and a conversation between this group and myself and the auditor to make sure that we, we understand what those wishes are and we're working to balance those.
I was thinking maybe a range, you know, not saying 10% has to be locally, but you know, five to 20 or something like that because we don't wanna lock ourselves in at a dollar figure or a percentage either, I don't think.
Yeah, but I was thinking on that, if we say, well, we gotta have 20%, well then a local bank could say, well, they gotta have 20%. I'll just bid whatever I want on this. We wanna have a competitive bid for that 20%. That's where you could have a little problem.
So I'll, I think I'll jump over here to the, the backside of this one. And, and just give you a kind of a current scenario. I think we, we've covered the ideas of the goals of public investment. A, security. Two is cash flow. Three is yield. Investment is a tool to leverage necessary fund balance to offset operational costs. It's not investing for investing sake. Yield from investments is included as a revenue item on our current operational budget, right? We can't, we can't put everything in a 36-month CD and just reinvest it and, and wait to earn it. We have to earn some in 2023. And we will have to earn some in 2020, 2024, et cetera. However, reinvesting interest income makes sense in certain cases when you're saving in anticipation of a large capital project. So, and here's, here's where having an investor or an advisor really helps to make, investing is hands-on and takes time. Coming up with an investment strategy and identifying which, which investments are going to mature at what date and when we have access to those funds and what we do with each of the funds that are coming out of each of those investment tools is really, is really time consuming. I've spent the last three, four weeks, maybe, maybe a little bit more than that, working with Kay on trying to identify this and knock these things down and, and getting to that point. Well, when you're doing it, it's all you're doing. And it's important because it's, it's a large chunk of money and we need to be planning for it. But I still, honestly, I don't feel like we have a really good handle. We're gonna have enough, we're gonna have enough interest maturing in 2023 to more than meet our budgetary goal. But I really don't have, we don't have a five-year plan yet. We're working towards having that. All the work we've done right now is to step up all of our old rates from a half a percent up to four and three quarter, or four and, four and a third, 4.36, so that we're actually earning more money on that. And honestly, at this point, the, the selection of six, nine, 12, 18, 24, 36-month CDs and other terms of investments is, was really kind of a shotgun approach just to get it done and make sure that we had some maturing at each point. But we really haven't put a strategy to it yet. We just know we have enough. I don't know that we've done, I know we've done good work and we've really improved and I can show you that. But we don't really have a plan that's tied back to our monthly cash needs and our anticipated capital projects going forward, right? We wanna tie these two things together with that.
So if, if I may interject something, just in reference to what Ken was saying, if we would put a percentage in here, you know what Jeff is saying, is Kay and him are just really at the beginning stages of actually doing some serious planning. It's not that we didn't plan before, but now we're doing it in a different way. And personally, I would like to, I would like to invest the majority of our money locally. So, you know, you're saying 10 to 20% and I'm saying...
I was just throwing a figure out.
Yeah, but anyway, I, I agree with Jeff in the point that not to put a specific percentage in the policy. Cause as time goes and Jeff and Kay look at this and then they get the help, if they get the help of Ellers, things are gonna change. But the goal is to maximize local investment plus outside investment so the county gets the best possible return.
Maybe, maybe it would be good just to simply say what you just said. The goal, the goal of the Board is to invest locally. And then just say, however, open to investing
Cause diversification is good.
Yeah.
And it's health, it's a healthy way.
But just make a statement of that. Just to, to let it know that it's in the policy that has to go over the Board.
And there's a hidden value in, well, maybe not a hidden value, but there's a value in, in having local investments.
There is, definitely.
There's a significant value in transferring 4,000, $4 million to an investment company too.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, so you combine the best of...
Because in November, we got a CD rate from Citizens National Bank of 1.60.
If you can get 4.8 somewhere else, do 4.8 as well.
We didn't get 4.36 until after we moved money.
Just going back to that, to your point about writing something in there, if you go back to the very first paragraph under purpose and need for policy, it, it does basically state that there already. It could be, you know, it talks about it, you're, you're investing public funds in a manner which will provide the highest investment return with the maximum security while meeting daily cash, you know, and it talks about those specifics. But it's to develop an overall program for cash investments. So without reading each and every word there, you could input a couple of words in that paragraph to probably meet that. Maybe it says it there, but it's more opaque than what you wanted to say.
Seems like it's maybe just a sentence in there saying, you know, the goal is to invest as much locally, but not obligate yourself to a percentage because we wanna get competitive bids locally too.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend the statement that the goal is to invest locally. I would make a statement that the, that the Board understands the importance of investing locally.
And the value?
And the value.
Or the, or the, the value of investing locally?
Adding something like that, yep.
Yep.
Rather than, anything that's pointing towards, now, when we get into the actual dollars and cents, you'll see that the majority of Hubbard County's funds are, are invested locally and always will be, right? So I, when we get to the end of this, you may look at that and say, well, that's not, that's not important because we're gonna have to, we're always gonna have to have the majority of our money tied up locally because of the way that we do business.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, like we have a regular checking account. I'm sure that checking account has an average daily balance and that's probably a pretty high amount. That's money available right there.
So if we take, if we go, step down the next couple of lines on the page, you'll see that currently at CMB pooled investments, we have 14 and a half million at four and a quarter to four and a half percent. Those are the step-up rates. So those 14 and a half million in CDs and pooled investments were at 0.5%. 2022, I don't think we even earned $160,000 in interest. In the PFM Magic Fund, we have 2 million, just under 2 million invested. That is currently yielding about 4, 3, 4, 4. And then in Ellers Investments, we have $4 million in one and two-month securities. The CMB pool investments include the CMB Magic Fund and the CDs that we have wrapped up together and just the, the different mechanisms that we have with that. Operating cash and all other cash, we have $8 million sitting in, in essentially non-interest earning accounts, just sitting there waiting to be used.
And Nicholas...
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
The question about our checking account. No, the checking account I have also earns interest.
Yes, that was gonna be my question, Ken.
I'm wondering, is it possible to set up something like that or do banks not do that?
It, it does, but it's earning interest at, at a tenth of a percent or two tenths of a percent, not four and a half percent. But so, they are, they are in interest earning accounts.
Okay.
Oh, they already are.
They already are in interest earning accounts. They are not earning much interest.
Right, right.
Neither is my checking account.
No, right. So I...
You don't have 8 million in there?
Not yet.
There was some thought too about in the proposal, the details of investing more of our cash on hand than we currently do. If I remember, I read, reading through it, that they thought we could do more comfortably. My only concern with that, that would be the deficits being generated by Heritage right now, that that, that's figured into that?
Yep.
So that we don't all of a sudden go, oh whoops.
So looking at, at the next piece down here, banks have an obligation to be fair, right? When we, when we asked in November and we got information and it wasn't great information, they're responding to our efforts. Whereas the advisor is working on our behalf to maximize those yields, right? They're actively working. Now, we're paying them a quarter percent on, on the interests or on the pooled funds that we have with them. So there's a reason why they haven't, why they have a stake in our success, but they are working like a realtor who's, who you listed your home with. Their job is to be, they're responsible to you, right? The bank is responsible to make sure everybody is treated the same. Now, there's still certainly an opportunity for conversations ongoing to talk about what's coming up, what's not coming up, looking ahead six months at what's maturing and what we ought to best do with that. We really haven't, like I said, we haven't done a, a great deal with the strategy about when we're earning interest, what are we doing with that? As I understand it, when we're earning interest on these CD investments, it's getting rolled into our local Magic Fund. So it's, it's rolling out of those, what we're earning on a periodic basis on those CDs invested. The earnings are going into that Magic Fund, the local one managed, so that, that those assets are growing and compounding in that way. So that makes sense and that's good. So the question relative that Commissioner De La Hand just mentioned is, we currently have $8 million in various checking accounts earning very low interest rates. Whereas if there was a portion of that, that we invested in those Treasury Bonds on the one and two month and ladder those things so that we always have, every month we have an extra $2 million liquid and available. So we keep cash on hand for what we know we have. We've got money coming in relative to that. The development of the strategy requires a little bit of study. And what I've done to this point for Ellers is shared with them the last 12-month history of our expenditures, right? Take a look at what's our monthly spending? What does it look like? What does that checkbook balance need to be at the beginning of every month to make sure we get through that? I also just ran our last December 31st cash trial balances for the last six years so that we can have a look and see what our trial balances are, our cash balances are in our major funds. And then take a look at whether that's growing or not growing relative to, to our budgets. That kind of information is what an, an advisor needs to say of this $8 million. There's $3 million that you could invest in longer term and there's another $2 million that you could invest in a laddered way so that it's always liquid. And that doesn't mean that those funds aren't invested in local tools. The advisement is just, right now, that $8 million is sitting there earning a tenth of a percent interest or two tenths of a percent interest where we could take 2%, you know, 2 million out of that and put it in the local Magic Fund. It's still more liquid than a CD. We could ladder that in, in other shorter-term CDs and in six or nine or 12-month CDs and have those mature, but then they're in there for that amount of time. Whereas if we go with the investment company and throw a couple more million in there, then we can ladder those in those Treasury Bonds. Now, here's, here's the good deal. When those are going up, every time they go up, you have an opportunity to capitalize on that. If the market starts to go down, whatever you have invested at the high rate of return for 36 months, that's a great return. Law of averages mean that we need to have a balance of all of those things. So I think it's, it's necessary and very likely that more than half and probably closer to two-thirds of our, of our funds are always gonna be invested locally because it's necessary to secure what we're doing. It's good for the community. As, as Jason mentioned, what do they, what do they lend out? 90 to 92% of, of cash invested is...
Higher than I thought.
Is sent back out into the community, right?
That money's working here.
And I think he said for every $5 million of funds that they have invested, they personally create a job, right? Basically, that's the number that they have. So all of those things are good and they're not, and they're important. And they're important for your consideration. They're important for the taxpayers' consideration. When we've routinely got $30 million tied up and designated and cash that we just need to keep this thing rolling, we do have an obligation to make sure that we're getting the best yield we can off of that. And some of that means a little competition goes a long way. And on this current, on this current deal where we've got, you know, 14 and a half and another $8 million, so $22 million of 29 is sitting in local banks working for us, working better for us now because the markets are better. And then 6 million of that is in other funds. I think that's enough for us to have that competitive nature in there. The only thing would be is if we come up with a strategy that says, hey, another two or three million dollars of that stuff that's sitting around us cash, like we've got two and a half, we've got two and a half million dollars of the transportation tax that's sitting in a designated fund, doing almost nothing for us. And we know when we need it, right? So that's a really easy one to say, we could be earning four and a half percent on that today instead of two tenths of a percent on that. And then when we need it, we'll have an extra, you know, a million dollars. Right now, at four and a half percent annually is $45,000. So that's $135,000 in 12 months we could earn that we, that we're not currently earning. So whether that is local and another mechanism, if... And the other pieces that are, of course, have to be respected are designated funds and restricted funds and general funds. Those are the three types of funds that we have to work with. The further you get into that, the less you wanna know about it. That's Kay's job and the banker's job and the auditor's job to make sure that they do that. But that's, those are other things they have to tie back to. So I'm thinking from a strategy standpoint. And what I'm wanting Ellers to put together for us based on the information and a review of our cash flow needs is to take a look at that roughly $30 million and give us a better balance of what types of investment mechanisms we can be using to maximize the yield and still demonstrate that we have the liquidity and the cash on hand when we need it. But that $8 million sitting in, in checking accounts obviously is not working for us as well as it could be. Right now, I think everything else under investment is doing, is within a half a percent of being optimal. And that's good. And the local bank, last week when we were ready to move, to step up those, those 36-month CDs, which they built in, they'd offered, that was what they were doing in advance and, and keeping the relationship going. They were gonna go 4.1. And then he said, hold off. And Treasury went up another quarter percent. He just added that to the top and said, okay, then that's what we're gonna do. And I told Kay, I said, just move those over, get them done. Stagger the, don't put them all at 36, stagger them so that they're maturing at different rates or at different points in time. So we have that. So this page shows kind of the net result of that. And you can see the top half was January 1, 2023. And you'll see the CDs on the, on the left, the CD number, the local investment bank or the, or the investment holder. And then about right in the middle, you'll see the interest rate line. And you can see that we were at 0.9, 0.45, 0.5. All those CDs were at roughly half a percent. The Magic Fund was doing relatively well. And the Treasury investments that we moved to Ellers were doing pretty good for us. So the estimated earnings on that, on the, on the complete investment was $425,000. Now, some of those were being held for 36 months, 18 months, 12 months, 24 months. So that's pooling. The next column is the monthly value that shows $40,000. So $40,000 a month would be $480,000 in a year. Our budgeted amount for 2023 was 400,000. Now, the bottom half shows the step-up rates on those eight CDs at Citizens National going from 0.65 to 4.35. The ones in yellow are the ones that hadn't been stepped up. The first one...
I see they're all maturing this year.
They're all maturing this year. 61, 615, I'm sorry. The, okay, the matured, the one that has a mature date of 3/15/23, when that matures, that's gonna go to cash. That was planned to go to cash, so we need that. The three others maturing in, in June or September have been stepped up at new rates. So they're also at 4, 4.36. So our monthly earnings have gone from 39,000 to 65,000 and, and it'll be higher than that when we calculate those. and, and it'll be higher than that when we calculate those additional ones in there. Those three additional will be, be closer to seventy-two or seventy-four thousand dollars a month in interest earnings. Which if we take the first couple of months value from the top and the last nine months value from the bottom, shows total interest earnings of about seven hundred thousand dollars this year. Now, we need at least four hundred thousand, right? Some of that is going to carry forward towards future projects. We haven't made the determination of, of which of those we're going to spend and which of those we're going to reinvest for a future year. That's part of the strategy. But the important thing to note is that the, the changes on the, on the today's investments fourteen eighteen million dollars is yielding much better for us and that's just a result of the, of the markets changing. But it's also the result of the fact that Kay's made those transactions and, and done that work so that we're, we're capturing current numbers.
So in reality, as of right now, we haven't really changed any of the percentages of the, where the money is invested, roughly same amount locally. What we're, what we're talking about changing in the strategy would be what to do with the extra cash on hand in the checking accounts and maybe taking more of that and investing that.
We, we don't have to make a determination on that. The, the big change is we did move four million dollars from a local bank to an investment brokerage to have that diversification and the opportunity for some liquidity that we didn't currently have. Um, the other advantage to having those funds under management is now we get that, that manager's advice on the whole, the whole thing that is invested. And we're not having to put together, I mean, these putting together this chart is really not an inconsequential, inconsequential thing to get it. And I'm, and it's not quite exactly right because the, the yield earnings are estimated on a monthly basis, whereas the monthly earning is not the same as the annual earning, the APY. The monthly earning is included in what you get in the APY. So those are probably off by about a percent, percent and a half, but seventy-five thousand dollars and a percent off is, you know, seventy-three fifty, seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars. So it's, they're really close. But having an advisor who's actively working on, on our behalf is going to improve our ability to watch the markets, they're actually going to be looking at the trends, they're going to be looking out and taking the best example and forecasting and, and talking about primarily the type of investment tools that you have and the periods that you're investing for them. And then helping to make sure truthfully, right now, our, our cash on hand, we're, we're overly cautious with it because we don't have the capacity to dial it in and really do a, a, a six, twelve and eighteen month needs assessment of our cash on hand, right? And we haven't tied that to our investments. So we usually just err on the side of having more than enough in the, in the accounts. And those are the accounts that are going to be earning less than any other, any other tool, any other vehicle we can have those in. So the, the opportunity, like I said, is really to maximize how much of that eight million dollars that we have sitting in cash, how much harder can that be working for us? And that's kind of the question that we're going to work with Lers to solve. And the number of, of where that is, if that's in the local, if that's in the local magic fund, if that's in shorter term CDs, if that's in laddered investments, um, through the, the, the others group, wherever that is that, that makes sense. What you will get as a result of this is you're going to get probably a quarterly update on on this that shows where our funds are under management, what they're looking like and what our yields are going to be like and what's changing. There's no, not much point in doing it monthly because things aren't changing on a monthly basis, but a quarterly update on, uh, you know, you get monthly reports on our cash, you get monthly reports on our expenses and revenues. Um, but a quarterly, a quarterly update on where our investments are and how that's tying to our longer range goals.
I got a question with the, the, the property tax money that we captured from Enbridge. And I know a third of that was going to go for capital needs.
Yeah.
So do we don't have a designated account for that?
Nope. No.
Because that, of course, is something if we're thinking future needs, maybe that could be one of those that's more long-term investment type thing.
Yeah, and um so it's, it's kind of a little, it's a little complicated and obtuse, right? So we're looking at budgeting and we're looking at all of our, our pools of money and buckets of money that we have set aside for different things at different times. But we pool all of those things that are in the general undesignated. And that's, you know, that fourteen and a half million dollar chunk that's just invested for, for current and future needs, right? Some of those other things, the, the million dollars that's invested on behalf of natural resources, that has to be kept, that's designated funds, that has to be kept separate. So we have different funds that are, are poolable and we have some that need to be, if they're designated or restricted, then we actually have a different account for them. Uh, but almost everything in the general fund can be pooled. When I talk about the, the, the two and a half million dollars that we have in the road tax, that's a designated fund. That probably has to be invested by itself, right? Um, and some of those other things. So you have to look at all these things in concert and tie them all back to different things. What we set aside for our capital projects ends up being tied to our cash. But you have to look at, you have to walk all the way around the building and look at all four sides to get a full picture of, of the budget, the spending, um, the money that we're setting aside, especially when we're talking about capturing taxes and, and allocating that for future use. We allocate that for future use in the budget and we show the expenditure of that or the non-expenditure of that in two ways. If we allocate um, six hundred thousand dollars to be spent on current capital, you can see where those projects are. Next week, when you see the request for the radios for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars come through, well, that's a hundred and fifty that we plan to spend out of that six hundred thousand dollars this year on radios for, for law enforcement, right? The element, the, the money that was set aside for economic development, you'll see that when that comes up and, and you'll approve that money as far as an expenditure. At the end of the year, when we have five hundred thousand dollars for future that we're not designating, what you should see is you should see our fund balance at the end of the year go up by five hundred thousand dollars. And you'll see the long-range financial plan showing that economic development. Uh, we allocate hundred thousand or a million dollars to that, we spend five hundred thousand dollars. So next year, we start at five hundred thousand dollars, we put another million in there, now we're carrying one point five million. Those are not necessarily numbers that are managed in our accounting system. Those are numbers that we're managing on our ledger outside of the accounting system. So you have to, like I said, you have to walk all the way around the building, take a look at that picture and see that. Keep asking those questions because if you're not getting those reports on a quarterly basis to understand where we're at with that, then we need to give you more reports or we need to refine the reports we're getting because that's exactly what you should be seeing. So the investment, how our fund balance looks and how that's allocated for, for different uses and then the actual cash, um, accounts and balancing that you see on a monthly basis. All those things have to work together. This is actually, I've, I've never had to do this before. And it's actually very interesting and, and because of where we were with interest rates nine months ago and where we are right now, it's really exciting to see what the options and the opportunities are. And it feels like we've done a really good job of pushing that forward. When we were budgeting, I had no idea, I just, I looked at Kay and I said, two hundred thousand dollars is not enough with this much funds under management, we need to be able to put four hundred thousand dollars in there. She was like, I don't know if I want to guarantee that. And I'm like, yep, four hundred, we're putting that in there. And I think we'll probably be able to realize significantly more than that. Like I said, when I show that seven hundred thousand, are we going to realize that all in twenty twenty-three? Are we going to push some of that forward to twenty twenty-four? We haven't made a determination yet, but you will see that as we go through.
So then for the next board meeting, we're going to be looking at approving the policy?
Yes.
And the strategy?
No, just the policy.
Okay, because Lers is going to come back with a strategy.
We, we will have, the strategy will be relative to a review and analysis of our cash needs on a monthly basis and then probably a recommendation about that eight or so million dollars that isn't being actively invested and how much of that we can safely invest and still manage our cash needs. So yes, those are the two components that we have to come back with a strategy. And that'll be more of a conversation. The documentation of the strategy will be the quarterly investment reports where we show that. And then we got to get better at running. I, I found in IFS a cash trial balance because Kay provides the trial balance. Well, the trial balance is kind of confusing because it's showing all the ledger accounts along with the cash accounts and it just, it's, for me, it's hard to read. And then there's a report right next to it, it says cash trial balance and it just shows the cash trial balance and shows the change, the net result of expenditures, money coming in and money going out to the fund balance on all the funds. And um, it's a lot easier to read and the ledger stuff, that, that doesn't affect our cash on hand. The ledger stuff is just kind of how we, you know, depreciation, other stuff, um, obligation, future obligations. Um, but I'm much more interested and I think you're much more interested in cash as well. We obviously at least annually have to come back to that, the auditor reports on all those general ledger items for us and gives us a, an update on where we are. But that really doesn't affect our, our daily, weekly and monthly work.
Dave, what you brought up even about heritage, you know, once we have even the first quarter, because there, there seems to be a new trend developing in a positive way, that will also help us kind of plan for.
Well, and they'll see that in the, in the trial balances where the funds are at.
Yep, yep.
And then, you know, you can go by worst case scenario by looking back over the last year and seeing the last couple of years and seeing where they're at. They'll see the trend and they'll be able to determine that. Because, you know, it, it appears it isn't going to get worse. It should slowly get better.
Yep, we have annual data and we have, but we are going to move forward with adding, um, if you look at the, if you look at the cash, at the trial balance, you'll see that we, um, we have way too many funds in use. So we have a different fund for Heritage Manor, for the assisted living and for the memory care. They each have their own fund, they don't each need their own fund. And then all of their debt and all of their retainage money, we have in different funds. We have like seven different funds that are allocated to Heritage Operations and it should just be one, right? So we're, we've got to clean that up so that when I give you, when I give you a report, you don't have to look in seven different places to, to assimilate the report, that you're just looking at one. We look at Fund Fifty-Five, we look at three departments like we have in, um, in social services. We have Fund Eleven and then we have three departments. And then you can look at the detail level for each department and you can look at the summary for the fund. You can't look at the summary for seven funds, right? It's just, it, so it's dispersed, it's going to get cleaned up. We're going to go back at least to January first and populate the reports that we're getting from Heritage on the actual expenditure and revenue based on the budget that they presented in September. So we'll have that level of detail and breakdown. How much are we spending on nursing? How much are we spending on laundry? How much are we spending on each of these items? We'll be able to look at that. How much revenue are we getting in from this, this, this different source? We'll have that detail in there the same as we do for all of our other departments. Um, and then when you look at it, it'll be a lot easier to, to see on a month, on a, on a monthly basis and a year-to-date comparison. So we'll be able to manage that much better. It is not an easy thing to clean up what's in IFS right now. So I'm, I'm working on that. I'm not going to have your January reports available for you on the same timeline that Kay's going to have your January. She's already got the January reports out for the rest of the county. But I would think by the end of the first quarter, we probably have, I have to go in and, and update all of the expenditure codes and the fund codes and all that stuff. We have to just move everything and track everything in one. And then at the end of the year, we're going to have to make the journal adjustments to consolidate all the rest of those funds into the single fund. So it's going to, it's going to be a year to get it cleaned up. But we still should be capturing monthly data this year for better tracking.
So in, in summary, I'm supportive of the, the policy as, as presented. And I think it's clear that probably the sentiment of the board here is that we value local investing and that should be an important consideration in any decision that's made in the strategy.
Well, that's where I'd like to see at least a sentence, you know, stating that desire in the first paragraph there. However, it can best be worded, um, but I'd like to see that in there in the first paragraph. Just so that it's out there that we do support local investing.
You know, one thing good about putting that in there, Tom, is if somebody from the public read this and had never listened to a board meeting, from the way it's written there, they would not know that we support local support. So putting a sentence in there, even for the public will be defining.
And yeah, for another spot, you, you answered my question about, because several places it says periodic reporting to the board. I was wondering what that meant, so you said quarterly?
I think quarterly on the investment is as, is as frequently as you could present it and have it be material. Because it just doesn't change that often, but yes.
Maybe it should say somewhere in there quarterly.
Instead of periodically.
Instead of periodically. And then also one of them says periodically to committee, finance committee or the board. I'd prefer to just simply say the board.
Because you could still do something in finance committee, but the board would.
But as long as it's quarterly to the board.
Yep.
I saw that too.
And again, you're getting the point that it's a template.
Yeah.
So. Okay, we can make those adjustments.
Yes, we would need that before we could approve.
They're very, they're very modest, but, but all, what I can do is I can take that and I can redline where I think that was before I put it in the next time. So you're looking at the redline and a clean copy.
Okay.
And if that satisfies what your, your comments are, then, then it's, if I redline it, it'll be very easy for you to see that I've adjusted three sentences in there. And from what I'm hearing, that's approximately what we're talking about, okay?
I think it's a good idea to have an investment firm, you know, to give us guidance on where best to put the money in. That's a very good idea.
So think about it. Now, Kay's very good at what she does, but what she does is head down day-to-day processing a lot of work. How many people are really qualified to, to manage an investment portfolio of twenty million dollars? Did you, did you know that's what we're doing, right? I mean, that's a big, that's a big responsibility. So I, I, I think it's fantastic and completely appropriate that we have someone professional on our side that's helping us with those things.
Well, and she just came to us, was it last year or the year before, about one of the funds changing it over or whatever to save us dollars. So I mean, she has been doing it, but like you said, when you've got somebody that's doing it as a full-time job.
Well, for six months out of the year, in election years, she's not paying any attention to investments, right? And you guys, you guys completely understand that and, and you know that that's true and appropriate. Um, and what happens to the market during those six months? Well, from year to year, we don't know.
Constantly changes.
But an advisor will know. And an advisor, you, 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 we give them the authority with the money that, that we've transferred to their accounts and investments to manage those in our best interest. Notify us so we can report on it, but they're managing those in our best interest. In the same way, they're going to share with us, okay, monthly and quarterly, here's what's happening in the, in the markets that you should be working on and reflecting on and, and thinking about, okay, well, do we take, do we take our earnings from our twenty-four month CDs right now because that's the best thing that we have and turn around and throw them right back into that same CD? Or do we turn them into this other fund? You know, just, just the, just the quarterly, monthly and quarterly interest earned on the, on the current investments, what's the best thing to do with them? You know, that, just that advisement is helpful. So I, I think we've, we've come a long way. Obviously, the, the market gave us happy news to report on the bottom line and taking a look at what the impact is going to be. But there's still a lot of work for us to really be able to paint a solid picture. We have our, we have our monthly statements and our cash trial balances, right? We have our policies and then we have our budget. And they all, you have to look at all of them all at the same time to get a full picture of, may, maybe it's only a three-sided building, but you still have to walk all the way around it to understand the scope of it. So, other questions on that?
So the key is to watch the quarterly reports and if you feel some of those investments are getting out of whack, have a conversation.
You know, when I, when I take a look, when I go to the PFM Magic Fund and you look at it and then there's the dashboard there and there's three or four things from their, from their main website and, uh, and the first thing is, is, you know, this week's yield rates, right? It's just, just a bit. So I would anticipate that, that, that quarterly update on the investments would just be a on the investments would just be a kind of a summary of where the markets are right now and what the trend is and what, you know, what, how far ahead can you look? I don't know. But what do you think the trend is and what do you think the trend might be? Just to provide a paragraph that says, this is the trend information that's informing our decisions over the next, over the next three to six months. And then that gets adjusted as you go through. But I think that's also helpful. And again, we get those reports in the agendas and now the public can see a copy of those two. So they all, they can all see that, what's happening with that and know that it's being handled well. That's a big, that's a big part of the value is you all being informed and understanding the policy level of that and approving where you need to and understanding and asking questions where you need to. But then sharing that information so the public also has competence that that's being done well.
Yeah, but quarterly reports, meaning to the board, it means it's also to the people.
That's right. That's where they are. They're in the agenda so that you'll see them and everybody has access to them. So I think we've, I think we've come a long way with this. Kay's done a lot of work on it. And it's unfortunate that she's not here, but it's also really helpful because I look at it in a different way than she does. And I think it probably takes some of what she does in her office and what the investment, investment people do and try to translate it into, into a way that people will readily understand what's happening. We've got a lot of money. We've diversified it. We've pooled it. We've pooled it so we can get the best yield, right? Because if you, if you invest $1,000, it's better than investing $100 10 times typically. But we've also diversified it in a way that we have different mechanisms that are giving us shorter and longer-term earnings so that we can address our cash needs, which this is serving our cash need. This is not just serving, 30 years from now, we're going to cash out and run, right? Like you, like you would, you're thinking when you're saving for retirement. I'm cash, I'm, I'm saving for a period of time. At that point, I'm going to start spending it down. Well, that's not the way we're doing it. We're, we're earning savings, yielding for annual and periodic cash needs as opposed to retirement and cashing out and done that. So...
Or saving to buy a house.
Saving to buy a house. We're, we're, like I said, there's some element of that, you know, reinvesting interest income makes sense when we know that we've got something big coming up. If we can get by on $400,000 and we're earning $700,000, we'll take that, roll that in against the next big project that we're going to have. But we have to, and the capital improvement plan will tie into this as well. So we'll have an idea and we'll know where those things are placed for placeholders so that we have an idea of what we're saving for or when we're going to bond or when we're retiring debt and we can take on debt, all with the goal of managing things well, keeping good, solid infrastructure, and having as stable a tax rate as possible. And those are the outcomes that the public are concerned about.
Okay, moving along, the next item will be committee list updates.
And my, my hope is, is that we would capture everything we can. And Denise is going to take notes so we can, we can do, update this.
So some of these are, we could just leave open for when the election happens?
As I say, how many of them can just...
There's a couple I'd like...
That they can stay open for right now. Some can't.
There's a couple I actually would like to be on because of changes that have been made in other committees?
Yeah, there's a couple that I'm on with Dan, Extension and Northwest Juvenile. And I explained to Northwest Juvenile just yesterday, had an executive board meeting there, that for now, we probably won't fill Dan's position on Northwest. As a founding member, we do have two commissioners on that committee. But I thought for right now, we would just wait until we had a fifth commissioner. Because who knows what will be, maybe, like Dan was on, I think partly because of his background.
Right.
And maybe the next commissioner will have that similar background and be a perfect fit or something.
So can we back up and go through these in the pages? So it's easier for Denise to keep through with that. So the Hubbard County Standing Committees, do we need to address Public Safety and Transportation other than finding a different standing date for that meeting? That standing date in time being in the first Friday just lines up with too many distractions.
I guess Dave is, is that part of that committee? So is he good with that?
It's, it's, it's a place where we generally come up with ideas that would probably eventually kick forward to becoming policy options. So we regularly have updates from Land Commissioner, from the engineer, and from the Solid Waste Administrator relative to operating concerns, questions that are coming up, policy questions that are coming up. It makes, it obviously makes sense to have two commissioners on that. But is there a need for a second one right now? I don't know. I wouldn't, it's currently scheduled for the first Friday of the month at nine o'clock. And I think that we're going to have to look for a different time. So don't let the standing time of it concern anybody.
If we end up going all the way to August and this is a committee that starts forming policy, I kind of think it's a good idea to temporarily put somebody on there.
I think we should have a second name on this one because we come up with a lot of stuff.
That, that additional person would be temporary because we've got to save room for the new commissioner.
Yep.
Do you want to be on it?
I, I probably would have time to be on it.
And you go back to things like Labor Negotiating Committee, that just, probably not much work to be done. And we'll address that, you know, the year that it's coming up. The Benefits Committee, I think that that's okay the way that it is. Courthouse Security Committee and Safety Committee are infrequent, so I think that they're appropriate.
Forget, when we get down to Emergency Management, to mention something.
But once we have a new commissioner, we need to bring this back up in that work session and just go through every one of it again and, and make sure it's, you know, balanced and everyone's involved.
And I think your comments about some of these, we can just hold open, makes sense. And some of them, we need to cover temporarily. And the questions I've taken from people who are interested in filing are largely about time commitment and committee structure and committee list. And, and I've, and I've said, kind of the book of business, kind of goes from one commissioner to the next commissioner with a conversation and a little bit of horse trading, right? People are generally involved in committees that they have a particular interest in, or they have availability if the schedule is tight and, you know, if, if the schedule for a standing committee is specific to be like the third Tuesday and you don't have time, then it usually defers to somebody else who would have time to go to it. So I've talked to them a little bit about how those, how those work. Do we need a capital planning committee anymore? Or can we do that under, under general government?
Capital planning hasn't been in a long time.
And, and it was initially brought up, I think it was, was it brought up at the same time we did the standing committees? Or I think it could fold into the Standing Committee of General Government and that's where it would, that's where that conversation would happen.
Yeah, if you've got a committee that's not reading, then maybe...
Then I think we should eliminate it.
That'd be fine.
Well, then, okay. Then I'm going to propose one also here.
Okay. Are we still on that, the Hubbard County Committee?
Yep. And so I think statutorily, we have to have this, but I'm just making a note, this Law Library Board, I don't even turn anything in for it. It takes five minutes to read the email and we vote and that's it. That's all we do in a year.
Yep.
So I, it might flourish into something when Jonathan's proposed a different location when we do some things. But I think because of the statute, we have to leave it on there, but it's pretty non-existent.
We, we do have to leave it on there. And, but, so we'll pull the capital committee, we'll fold that into the Emergency Management Planning Committee, I think.
We need to meet. It's been a long time. So I mean...
Who is the emergency officer?
Scott Williams?
Scott's here.
Yeah.
You know, that, I would think that committee should meet at least minimally once a year.
And even the last time, you know, we, whoever sent out, you know, all the information on it, it was really outdated.
Yeah. And as I understand, the County Emergency Management Plan is a four-year, kind of a four-year process for updating that. And every year, there's a piece of that that's under review. So we'll have to talk about their resources and their availability, but it's, it's important to bring that forward and have the board understand where we're at in the cycle of the emergency preparedness plan.
Just the first year, Tom, Ted, and I were on the board, that was the last time we looked at that plan.
Okay.
And it, much of the, many of the contacts were, information were outdated. And because of the changeover there, I'm not, no, I'd like to know that that's been addressed.
Right, I agree.
And they talked about meeting in the east part of the courthouse, which used to be the old entrance and now it's the south part, you know. There was, and like you say, the contact people didn't even work here anymore.
So it's been a while.
We haven't met since then. So at very minimum, we should be meeting once a year.
And I would suggest with the contact people, you put the position comma and then the person. So if the position, if the person quits, there's still a position. We know who's going to handle that.
And from a, from a note perspective, we'll have to see if Scott and Cory agree, but I think we should put the administrator on that line as well. Denise?
Oh, yeah, I would agree with that.
I've always, I've always been a part of Emergency Management Planning.
Yeah, it's just, we need to get back on track with that.
Parks and Rec has its, handles itself, so we'll get updates there as we need to. Planning Commission handles itself. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee, are we okay with one for now?
Yeah. I don't know if I've ever met on that. But there's that one and then Transportation Advisory Committee that's part of Social Services. I've got those highlighted on my thing here. I don't know, I don't remember ever meeting.
You've attended the meetings in Foston, the monthly meetings.
I was wondering if that's what this was supposed to be?
Yeah, there's a separate Foston Committee.
Is that, is that listed on here, the Foston one?
Yeah, the Foston one is listed on here. So, and maybe this is something we could ask Josh about.
We will need Josh to give us a little more context on that. But I think we need to leave that one on there. But I'm sure we can get by with one person for now.
Yeah. And that's one of those that Dan was on with me. And then like I said, the Transportation Advisory Committee, in connection with Social Services, as long as transportation is provided, committee is necessary. As I say, that's another one of those committees that I'm on that...
Hasn't met.
Hasn't met.
Make, make note of that too.
But you look at the people that are on the committee, to me, it would be important, I think, for you guys to meet once a year, if nothing else, just for conversation.
We'll follow up on the need for that. AMC Standing, are we...
Okay, so this was one I was going to ask you about. So I am on a subcommittee at Prime West, the Equity Council. I'm representing the northern portion for all the counties. And that will have, and along with that then is tribal representation. So I'm wondering if I should go to Indian Affairs on the AMC?
Sounds like that would be a good fit.
Yeah. So if I permanently went on that and got off the Health and Human Services?
I, I get what you're getting at, but right now, Indian Affairs is an addition. It's not a, it's not one of the five choices.
Okay.
So it would be, it would be a both and and not an either or.
Okay. So let's, let's wait and see the interest of the person that's elected.
Yep.
Because it might be a good fit for me if, if they don't.
So, for example, next week, on Thursday, when we have committee meetings, they're going to have Environment and Policy, General Government, Health and Human Service, Public Safety, and Transportation. But the Indian Affairs meets Tuesday night. It doesn't, it's not a, it's not a regular standing committee. It's, it's an additional one that everybody's invited to.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do we have Sharaz at a temporary hold? If we need to have somebody represent?
Well, but I'm, I'm not going next week, so...
Oh, okay.
I would, I would probably just leave it unfilled until we, until we have a full group and decide. And the only reason is because we have this much overlap with tribal lands, right? I mean, if it was this much, if we were Cass County, I would, I would recommend that it, that it be filled. But if it's, or Beltrami, I would recommend that it be filled. But for us, it's kind of incidental.
Can it be whoever can attend?
Yes. The Indian Affairs, if you...
Yeah, kind of like MRC.
You look at, you look at the invitation, you'll see that the Indian Affairs Committee is open to everybody. You, and everything you got communicated about next week. Yes.
Are they Zooming any of those?
No.
So maybe you just put any commissioner on that one.
And the Transportation one on AMC?
We're just going to have to leave it unfilled because you can't be in two places at once.
Oh, good point.
Yep. There's, there's five standing committees and five commissioners. So we really can't split that up any other way. You couldn't go to both meetings on Thursday, even if you wanted to. So I think that's as good as it can be for now. Now here is where you have way more information about these committees than I do.
Yeah, the Criminal Justice Workshop? I don't know how often that has met.
Is that coordinated through Mark?
Oh, Department of Corrections?
Yeah, Mark Smith.
Yeah.
That'd be a good guess.
Can you make a note that we need to check with Mark Smith on that one? And Extension, we already accounted for an alternate?
Uh, yeah. Well, at Extension, I contacted Lisa with the University of Minnesota. And if Dave is on here as an alternate and if he's willing to participate, they want to have six people besides the commissioners have representation there. Ideally, it would be District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then one large person. Currently, we have three people from District 3, one from District 5, and one from District 2. And they show District 4 is vacant, but they don't show anybody from District 1. And I was thinking that if David was on that, he's District 1, so there'd at least be representation from District 1. District 4, is there more ag and, and stuff like that? Nine townships in District 4 compared to District 1? So would it be more ideal if we were to get another person from the community, District 1 or District 4? And part of the reason is, is you have, like I said, three people from District 3. Well, some of those people were in different districts on this committee and then they moved to District 3. I have mixed feelings about that. I'd like to have some different representation, but also you've got these people have got history with Extension. You know, say Eva, for example, she's been there for years and the things that she can draw up from what's been done in the past and stuff. So it's, I'm conflicted there. Partly, I think I should have representation and partly I think, oh, now you're going to lose all this history too. And they're a nice group of people and they don't want to offend anybody and say you shouldn't be on it.
Most of our ag is in District 3.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's Hubbard, that's Tom's area, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so most, most of our ag is District 3 and west of town. So I don't have a problem with it being, you know, heavy with people from District 3.
Okay. And I've got a lot in District 5 too. And that's why I was thinking about District 4 now. You know, we got, I always think about Highway 64 and stuff. I know though, of course, that might be down more by Bedora. Like I said, there was a detour once where you had to, they wanted you to go some long way, well, I took a back road. And I was amazed at all the farms that were east of Highway 64 down there by Bedora and stuff.
So this might, this might be an example of how we were going to post things on the website, you know, because we can offhand think of anybody in District 4, but someone from District 4 might be very interested in this.
So, so I think what we should do is we should contact Lisa and work to put a posting up on the website to identify what the vacancy is and who, who our preferences are to fill that related to the current mix of the board.
The only thing, that question is if we have a new District 4 Commissioner, if that, if he knows somebody that he would like to have, or she would, that person, if I get correct here, may know somebody. Because I know, like, I was responsible for finding Teresa, which actually, I can't remember who helped me out on finding Teresa to represent District 5.
So there's a, there's a, you could still have a general posting.
True.
To say, you know, to help, to let people self-select to say that they're interested. You get three people who are interested for a spot, unlikely. You get three people who are interested for a spot, unlikely. And the Commissioner still makes a recommendation to the committee. Right?
True.
So we don't have to wait for the Commissioner for us to identify, to ask people if they're interested in serving.
Good point.
And then if that didn't be, if we didn't have the Commissioner to filter through, it would just go through the, to the committee to take a look at it and review the people and make a recommendation.
And this, and just David, in case you don't know, we meet four times a year. The next meeting is in April.
Yeah, can you have, have her just make sure I get the email?
Okay.
Meeting notices.
Tom, have you ever met for a historical society?
Uh, we did early on, especially when we were going over the roof stuff, but we haven't probably a year, at least a year. Or at least I haven't met with them. I was, in fact, I was thinking about it the other day to get ahold of the, the President, I think it's one of the pikes. And, uh, see if they want me to come to their meetings, but yeah, it's been awhile.
They're continuing to have meetings. Um, Nancy would be the person that would, you would want, that she would need to make sure that she's inviting you to those.
Okay.
And they will, they do have, it'd be fantastic, because in the absence of you being there, it all comes to me.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll get ahold of Nancy.
We, we, we should, we should connect you with Nancy so you can attend those meetings, because I think that would, they wouldn't appreciate that. And, um, and we would benefit from that. And this year, uh, the bid for, the, the bid deadline for that project, I think, is a week from today.
I saw that in the enterprise.
So.
Once we got the engineers for the roof, uh, they, they didn't contact me much anymore after that. I guess they wanted me involved with that.
They were done with you.
Yeah, they were done with me.
What does the HRDC Transportation Advisory Committee do?
Um, the TAC is what we've been calling that. Um, that didn't meet for my first two years, we just started meeting again a year ago. They're talking about different types of transportation. The last meeting I was at was actually in Akeley, it was part of their Trailhead project that they've got going. Um, I'm like, because I was on that, I went to that. There's been another, a couple of things I've done in Akeley and La Porte that I was going to hand over to Dan, because it just came up in the last couple, three months. And I'll be handing that over to.
Whoever.
Whoever. The, the, the Trailhead thing though is part of the TAC also, so I'll probably still be at those committee meetings. They had some nice ideas, but it all takes.
Money.
Money.
I, um, I moved my Wednesday commitment, so I will, I will represent in HIP, or on HIP rather. That meets on Wednesdays.
So we'll put you on HIP for now?
Yep.
And then everything else here is good?
Yeah, just delete ma, yeah, and then the next page, delete magic altogether. Cause that goes to an entirely different county.
Okay, we're. Oh, the magic fun, okay, so we can just completely delete that line until, until and unless it comes up that it's our turn again.
Yeah, and that'll be a, quite awhile.
Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, Land Classification Committee, obviously, we need to look at the statute and see who take Sandy's spot?
I asked, I asked Sandy about that last year when I became Chair. And she didn't remember the last time they met. But she said, there has been times in the past when there's residents have had, brought this forward. But like you say, who do we get to replace Sandy?
Yep, we'll have to read the statute and make sure that we make a.
Yeah, especially because you're, you're redefining the job description there also.
Uh, Mental Health Advisory Council, I think we cleaned that up, isn't, um.
There is still one, according to mine, that is a vacant, that was a social worker in the past, maybe that had retired.
Okay.
You know, for that one, it'd be good if you can get the Transportation Coordinator on that, because, uh, at the meetings, the, uh, the members, they have a lot of questions about their transportation.
Does this meet during the day?
Yeah, oh yeah.
So it's part of, this actually came up at Prime West, and so that's why I'm asking. Cause they were talking about the advisory committees from the social workers standpoint. Cause some counties were paying for the social workers to go to Prime West.
Okay.
And most of us said, it's part of their job, they're already getting paid by the county. And so Prime West, they brought it forward, should we be paying them? And we said no. And so same here, when I'm looking at the staff here, they're already getting paid for their day, so this is part of their day.
So if you can ask Brian, if you can get the Transportation Coordinator.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
And transportation is one of the biggest calls I've gotten over the last four years.
Yeah.
From residents, how do I get here, how, how can I get there, you know, I, I can't drive myself and this and that kind of stuff. And Brian's always been able to help me out.
In, in our meetings, we always have a, you know, any needs that are, you know, among the group, and every time, transportation's brought up, so. It would really be good if we can have them there.
And I don't know if they have Uber or Lyft or whatever out in the rural area, but I don't know if I could fill the need. And that's about the only idea I can come up with.
Okay, we'll add that. Um, under MCCC, instead of IT Department Representative, put me down there. They're just going to have to deal with me for awhile, till I get some answers. The support for IFS is just really super hard, you can't just call somebody and say, we've got a new employee coming on. I need, I need somebody to take a three-day crash course on how to use our, your accounting system. Eighty counties are dependent on it. Every time somebody retires with thirty years of experience, you just, you, you start from scratch. And without a training on how to build, how to use and build it from the beginning. I'm just being really ornery about this, that I need to do it right before I do it, because if I do it and do it wrong and throw bad information on bad information, the system's never going to get better. And IFS in and of itself, completely functional, the way that it's organized, can get out of whack really quickly. And ours is out of whack. And it's not the only thing that we get from MCCC. MCIT is good?
Yep.
MRC is good. Are we okay with Mississippi Headwater Board with one, or do we need to name an alternate in the, in the meantime?
Um, I've been on that for four years and I don't think Dan's ever come to a board meeting.
Okay, so.
So I think for now.
If you had a gap, you could ask somebody to sub or you'd be able to, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And that's normally held in Walker. So, you know, now, if, if, if it arises, I can ask somebody. At least that's just down Highway thirty-four.
Right.
It's a, it's one of those boards, as we maybe know, we've got, you know, just a few miles of the Mississippi. And yet we've got one vote out of those five counties. And like I said, once again, I'm the board chair and the things we get to, to do, but like, there's a signage program. We're, we're putting signs on the Mississippi, so when you're canoeing or kayaking or whatever, you know how far it is to the next access or, or whatever. But we will probably never have something like that in Hubbard County, because it's, there's one parcel, private parcel on the property, on the river, and the rest is all public lands. No, no accesses or anything, so. But it's still important to, to be there.
Community Health Board, everything, does everything else function with a gap for now?
Yeah, and like I said, I just talked with Northwest Juvenile, so they understand that we're, there will be just one of us representing.
Okay.
And I, you know, I let Prime West know. That's, I am always at those meetings, so unless I'm deathly ill. How about towards zero death, are they meeting anytime between now and May?
That'd be something we'd have to ask somebody.
We'll, uh, we'll check with Jed and Corey and see if they need that filled before we have an election. Otherwise, I think that gets us through.
I'm just going to throw this out, if anybody are interested in becoming an alternate to learn something new about something that our county is really involved in, now would be your time to step up. Because you can, you can attend the board meeting at Prime West as an alternate, even by Zoom, you just can't vote if I'm there. And that meets the fir, first Thursday of the month from about twelve to two-thirty or three.
They meet in person yet?
Oh, we've been meeting in person for a really long time, but we still Zoom it?
They still have a Zoom option as well.
Yep, so if you wanted just to learn, as someone could become an alternate, all I had to do then is submit your name.
I see MRC is looking at that for the next meeting on Tuesday. There's been some people wanting Zoom option.
I, I think that, I'm, I'm reading that same thread too, and I don't think that MR, MRC staffer came back and said, we don't have the capacity to do that. All of these other commissioners are saying, that'd be a really nice option, that'd be a really nice option, but I think they missed the first thing that said, we don't have the capacity to do that onsite.
But I think Julie said that, from AMC, of course, said that the, where they're going to be at has the capacity, because they had done it before there. But.
The first response from the new staffer for MRC was, we don't have the capacity to do that. Now Julie, which, which I typically don't believe is a very good answer, because all you need is broadband. And you should have that, but.
David's going to that next Tuesday, right?
If we haven't. If we haven't seen, um, a Zoom link.
Yet, yeah.
But yet, being a week out, I'm skeptical that it's going to happen.
And make sure, I'm not getting the emails from MRC now, ever since the change.
Oh, you know, I'm not either. Yeah, will you make sure they add our, our name?
I have all of our emails.
I will, I will check with her.
You said you just got a recent one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't even get that.
Oh. Yeah, um, Anne, Anne, what's your name?
Yeah, I add all of a sudden, by the way, the MRC meeting in March, I had planned to attend.
Yeah, I voted one unless I'm not there.
Yeah.
So yeah, I gotta make sure.
However, I wrote a letter to, on behalf of the HLVC, asking for a donation from Paul Bunyan to Gary Johnson, their CEO. And I gave personal testimony about how we moved and how we're willing to pay big dollars to have Paul Bunyan service. He asked Mary and I to come and talk to the board next, then at the March meeting, and so it's the same day as MRC, so I'm going to go to that.
You know, Paul was at the Rotary meeting last week.
Was he?
And gave an update and talked about a couple of other things, but didn't you say there was a place where, with the state of Minnesota, you could say, I'm unserved and apply for grant dollars?
I applied for it.
Do we need to publicize that locally?
Well, I would think so, there's no limit on, um, earnings. I can send you the link, I still have it from Mary.
If you would send me that, I think we should probably either try to put it out in the county or, or maybe even ask the newspaper to pick it up.
So once again, Mary Thompson came forth and she emailed me this, in the state of Minnesota, if you're underserved, which I am, and you, and you'd like help paying for, to have your lime rod in, which I would, because it's so expensive. You apply and then Paul Bunyan goes in and makes a bid.
So if, if a bunch of people on Beltane who are in an underserved area made an application, and all of a sudden it was pooled up and there was, you know, three quarters of a million dollars available to improve infrastructure on one half of a lake. You know, it, it, I'm thinking there's an opportunity to leverage just by
Absolutely.
having a bunch of people apply for funds.
Yes.
Because if those, if that area looked at it, they pooled it and they said, okay, well, we can make X amount available to make this happen. Well, now all of a sudden, Paul Bunyan can come in there, or, you know, whatever provider could come, would have the ability to, to make those connections.
And that's what I've always thought, like with the HRDC and, uh, Minnesota Community Health Board and the Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging, there's all these programs and, and stuff that are available to people, but yet, how do you get the word out?
Yes, because even the food shelf at Action Park Rapids, they're throwing food away.
Ah.
You know.
You know, and like I said, so how do we get that out to the public?
I know, we talked about that, because, uh, um, the food shelf talked, the representative talked about that, because they don't have an active Facebook page that's managed.
Well, that, all of these items, an email, if it's, if you think it's a notification that should be on the county website, then we can, we could certainly work with that.
Okay.
The county, I, I get a lot of people that say, we have services for elderly and we'd like you to put a link on our, on your website. The only thing we would refer to would be other nonprofit agencies who are, who are already working with. But we wouldn't be linking to businesses who are providing, right, you know what I mean? But, but if there's a, if there's a, a federal program or a state program where you can apply for grant funds for broadband, and if a bunch of people in Hubbard County made an application there, which made it more likely that Hubbard County would get money to improve broadband access, that makes perfect sense.
I just forward and do that.
Okay.
So just, uh, speaking of the website, I share that this last weekend was, got some compliments on the website, and the amount of data available on the county website has improved drastically and they really appreciate it, especially the GIS mapping.
Yeah, the services out there are good. And yet I, I hate our website. I hate the support for our website, which is why I, really soon, I'll be bringing this up, um, at the next Department Head meeting, is it's time to go out for RFPs and figure out who's going to be our next website provider, because they'll move what we have to a new platform. And then we'll just have to manage the data from there. But the tools for managing the data on the existing website are really hard to work with.
So the, the person that was, uh, representing the food shelf suggested that we would put flyers up at the county-owned apartments, which I thought was an excellent idea. So even when you're thinking of things, are, are there things that we could post at the, um, county-owned apartments that would be beneficial? Cause it wouldn't have to go on the website necessarily, but it could benefit residents as a way to get word out.
And, and a lot of the stuff like with the, uh, Area Agency on Aging, uh, I've referred even family members, because it's a statewide deal, the, uh, senior linkage line. The, the number of, the things that, the questions that they can answer, and if they can't, they know who to send you to. And, and like I say, I, when I first got on the board and they talked about, you know, things available for people sixty years and older, and, and like I say, all the stuff that's out there, and I had no idea.
I wonder if even my hubby would be, you know, because they work with seniors, they have specific programs and they probably already know all that stuff, I don't know. But that might be a question, I could ask Liz that.
Okay. Oh, and then going back to the MRC, Anne at Capitol Hills Associate sent you, and me, an email on February ninth. Do you want to contact her and?
I will.
And have her add?
I will.
Okay.
I'll make sure that she has all of your contact information.
Cause I'm just assuming maybe because I was the chair and delegate last year, that maybe that's the only reason why I'm getting it, you guys aren't.
I, I don't know how, I don't know what's been lost in translation, translation since Dan left, but, um, obviously, part of the conversation is all commissioners were always invited to MRC meetings and I don't, doesn't seem like that carried over.
Yeah, when you look at Anne's last email and you look at who she sent it to.
Okay, good, because I planned to go, but I think that was a Zoom event.
Doesn't look like a very long list, when you can consider all the counties and all the delegates.
Right. So good on.
Zoom.
Zoom only?
Yeah, Zoom only at the March meeting, unless they change it.
For MRC?
Yeah, from ten to one.
So we're good with the committee list?
It sounds like we're done, right?
Well, for, for now.
Yeah, yeah, for now. We've got a new Commissioner then, right?
Yep.
Go over it again. So you got a few things?
So, um, we have upcoming interviews for department head level meetings, and we typically involve one or two commissioners in those interview committees. The, um, review or the application period, first data review will be next Friday for the IT Director. And it was suggested that Commissioner De La Hunt might be involved in the, in the interviews for that position. He said he'd be available, we'll work with his schedule to make that happen. The next one, of course, will be, uh, Land Commissioner. So, and Sharp said that Ted and Tom might be interested in. So if, if, one or both, we could do, we could do both. Um, if we get into scheduling conflict, then we may have to say one or the other when we get to it, but for right now, we'll plan on involving both of you on that.
Yes, I'd like that.
We are, we don't even have the advertisement up yet, because we have to go through the job description, we have to go through, we just, we have to do the back-of-the-house work. Um, I think it's relatively clear that we need to refill that position.
Yeah.
Uh, I would hope that we would refill that, that we would be advertising in March, which we're almost close to right now. Which means we'd be interviewing in April, and then depending on the timeline for somebody, we wouldn't have anybody here till May or June. So...
At the earliest.
We, I will be having a conversation with Chip and talking through a transition plan and making sure that we've got, we know what needs to happen in between and things are assigned, but, uh, we need to get that moving along, so just wanted to make sure that we were, had that covered. And then, um, the conversation about candidate filings for the special election. Kay updated me yesterday and said that they are not required to file those the day that they come in, the affidavits, and that the Secretary of State's office is not uploading those to the Secretary of State website. So, my question to you is, what do we wanna do with that information? Do we wanna update that on a daily basis? Do we just wanna make sure the point of contact is the auditor's office during the filing period? Or do you want us to actively put that up on our county website as they're coming in?
I kinda think, um, it'd be nice to keep the public updated on that, because some people might sit back and, well, I wonder if there's gonna, I'd hate to go through a primary, but if there's only one other, yeah, I'll sign up for it.
And I've had a couple of people that said they'd like to see who's running before they decide whether they're gonna run or not.
So, the more info you can get out, the better.
So, do we put it on the website, or do they just know that they called the auditor's office to ask what the filings are? Because that's where the public data exists.
Put it on the website, because it's, in normal regular elections, it's on the website of the state of Secretary of State.
Yes.
Yeah, it is, because I kept looking yesterday, and that's all I could get.
It, it is, but this is, is, is putting it there gonna serve any purpose other than if we, if we just let people know, do they know to look at the county website? Or do they know to look at the county website because they've talked to one of you about it? That's not normally where they'd find the candidate filing information.
Yeah, because I told them to check the Secretary of State's website.
Right.
Yeah, and it won't come up.
And if, and if I told you that right now, we have two options, one is, we can put it on the county website, somebody's gotta manage that. Kay's not here for the next three days. I don't even have access to it right now, Marie is handling those. Or do we just simply say that if people are interested in understanding who's filed, they have to contact the auditor's office, they can get the current information?
I'm, I'm good with that.
One way or the other, you all just need to know, when people ask you, "How do you find that information?", you need to know which one it is. Now, we can, we can put it on the website, but...
So, if they wanted to contact via email, who would they contact since Kay's out?
They can contact me.
Okay.
Because I will, I will make a phone call and answer their, and answer their question.
Okay.
If they wanna contact me for candidate filings, I'm perfectly fine with that.
All right.
In the meantime. The tool for putting it up on the website, it doesn't work. I mean, if I put a notice up there, I can't edit the notice, I have to put another notice up there, and another notice up there. And it's just gonna, and it only shows the top three, and then you have to click on more notifications to see the rest of the notifications. This is one of the reasons why our website is really cumbersome, it's not dynamic enough relative to that messaging. So, a message that's up there and, um, like the messages that are up there now, the filing period is May thirteenth, thirteenth to twenty-fourth, and that's not changing, and that's up there for a specific period of time, works fine for that. This, this information has changed, the list could change on a daily basis, it doesn't, it doesn't have the capacity to be dynamic like that. And if we end up putting a bunch of notices up there, they're gonna push them to the subsequent pages, and it's really hard to find, it, it just doesn't work well. I can do it either way. But I will respond, if you have, if you have people ask and wanna know who the current candidate filings are, they can contact me and I will, I will return their, their request on the same day.
The only, I'm just wondering if the, the Thursday, let's see, that goes to the twenty-fourth. So, if on the twenty-third, we post something on the website as to who's filed? Maybe not.
I could, I could do that, I can do any of those things. It's just a matter of where are people gonna look for, the people that have contacted you that are saying, "Well, I might file or I might not file", are they more likely to contact you or look at the website?
And I would just be consistent the whole time.
I don't think...
And I don't know, Jeff, if you know this, but I did edit, I have edited Kay's page in the past.
Yes.
Is it just something that you want their names up there? Or how elaborate does it have to be? Like, if you go to their page, you can click on voter information, and that page populates. You know, I could build a, a link that we could update, but if it has to be something that is, you know, I'd have to give that information from, I don't know, Marie, but...
So, here's the announcement section.
It wouldn't be there, it would be on, on the administrator or on the auditor's page.
How do they know to look for it?
Yeah, good point.
The only thing is, if they went to the state's page and they couldn't get there, they come back to our page and they go down on, and they see voter information?
So, I'm saying if people are typically asking my, they're either asking myself or Kay or one of the commissioners about, "What's the filing period and who's filed?" And if you know that the answer is, Jeff can give you the current information, that's, that's probably better than saying, "Go to the auditor page, and then go to the voter information."
I, I'm just trying to go, I'm just trying to walk myself through, oh, you're doing that too, okay.
And then, you know, notices, you know...
You're talking a small subset of people that are gonna be interested in this, and is the work in updating the website all the time worth the effort versus just keeping a list?
Just keeping a list and answering the phone.
And answering the phone.
Because, because we, this notice of special election, this affidavit of candidacy, I mean, right here, underneath here, we could put a list of names of people who have filed. I, I'm just saying, telling someone to go there to get the information, as opposed to just answering an email or phone call? The email or the phone call is more direct and simple for them to understand, putting it here, I don't know that it...
I could put a line there that says, "Contact Jeff Capwell for elected candidates."
You could, but nobody's gonna find it.
Because the only interested people in this would be the people that has some inkling of running, because after that, everybody's gonna find out who's running anyhow.
Who have already called everybody.
Yeah.
I, I think the more important thing is, is that if people ask, that they know, nope, with the special election, it's not on the Secretary of State website. Contact the administrator, and he'll give you a list of who's filed.
Yeah.
I'll keep, I'll keep a list of the files.
I have to think back to when I ran in twenty-eighteen, I didn't file immediately, I, I waited, I was waiting, I, I waited about three days prior to the end of filing, and that's what I was doing, checking daily, who's on there, who's on there?
Yep.
Okay, still just the one, still just the one. And then that's when I decided to file myself. I, I, if you could just put some names on there, and then just let people find it themselves.
I, I, I have absolutely no problem doing that. I just, I... If somebody calls me, I'm, I'm likely to answer the question, rather than to tell them where to go find the information.
I, I'm more inclined to not bother, I don't wanna bother some guy trying to call all the time, I just go and look. Just go and look, that's, that's easier than me.
The, it, it works in the general elections, because the, the affidavit of filing have to be, have to be filed the day that they're, that they're filed, and they're automatically updated. That process, as I learned from Kay yesterday, is just not the same for the special elections. So, it's trying to cobble something together to...
Yeah, because the state's not willing to spend any time updating the special elections.
Yeah, it's just, it, it...
There's a reason why.
Yeah.
Well, that's just one, but this is, it's, it's important to us.
Yes, it is.
And it's important to the voters in District Four, too, and then those wanting to run for it. So, I, I'm, I'm in favor of at least putting the names on there.
Well, could you just update it once a week?
It was only ten days.
I, I know.
And we're already into the third one.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's a lot of work for the small subset of people that would be interested in that information in the first place.
They could, they could call, and they wouldn't have to say their name.
I would have an inclination not to call.
Whether you file early or late, well, that can work for or against you. I mean, that's...
If you're an incumbent, you wanna file first day.
You know, maybe everybody will be waiting till the last day, and next thing you know, you got five of them.
And that's where I, I think more information is better.
As long as the information's available, I'm good either way, so, you guys wanna do it?
So, Denise, on this page, "The Election of Voter Information, Under Form Affidavit of Cannacy", a name and a filing date.
Oh, okay.
Can we edit that page?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, it would be nice to be able to see it, I would agree with you, Tom, okay?
Because I thought about it last night, but I was doing so many other things that I didn't get a chance to check the second...
And that works, but that only covers half the days.
Yeah.
Because they...
I won't be getting phone calls at eight AM at night, right?
Well, if somebody wants to know, I would...
Yeah.
That's fine, we can certainly do that.
But so far, we have one?
I don't know.
Yes, we do have one, I checked with the auditor's office this morning. Mr. Chair, I just have one question for Jeff, um, because I've been reading on the legislative bills that have been introduced, and the family, and, uh, the Family Medical Lead Bill, they have no idea what it's gonna cost you, but they're still pushing it forward. Have you heard anything, um, how that might affect counties?
It's not gonna affect us, because we're, our benefits are already more generous than the requirements.
Okay.
We're already exceeding what they're asking for.
Okay.
So, it will not affect us.
Maybe just some small businesses.
Yeah.
And then the employees, because from what I've read, the employees will also, there'll be a deduction from all employees also.
Yeah, you, you know, and, and I'll honestly, this, from that standpoint, I had this conversation with Jim Prisbilla. I'm still, as long as benefits are tied to employment, we're gonna have a gap every time people change jobs or are unemployed.
Yep.
So, if benefits were pooled, and in general, I'm not talking about universal healthcare, I'm talking about pooled resources that everybody pays into when they are working. And I said, then, when you have this county-based purchasing, when you have Prime West, then you take the money, put it into Prime West to pay, to make benefits available for the people that they serve. If you aggregate how we're populating that bank, that, that bunch of money, and then you localize how that money is available to meet the needs of the, of the communities, it would work really well. Then we would be able to take care of health insurance, we could take care of all of those other needs. We, we can take care of all that stuff locally, because we've got a, we've got a group that works well, and a lot of people do.
I, I would agree, local would be best, right now, they're looking at hiring, at, at starting a whole new agency and hiring at least three hundred people at the state level.
Yep, yeah, and that doesn't make any sense.
No.
County-based purchasing is the way that, that, that it would work.
Yes.
But if those resources were pooled while you're working, just like you're currently paying into Medicare or you're paying into unemployment for every hour that somebody's working, and they're also making a contribution, pool those resources, put them into the, into the local places like a Prime West, then your, your service delivery is localized to the needs of the community. But, that'll never happen.
I had a couple of questions, maybe Tom, or you probably can answer, on Deep Lake Park, we're still planning to try and raise the buildings this summer, right?
Yes.
That's in the plans, yeah.
Part of the transition plan is, is making sure that I know what's going on with that from Chip, so that we carry that forward. But if we're planning on doing any of that, we've gotta be to the point of letting bids or, or getting quotes before he's done.
Say, on that subject, Chip, at the last meeting, said they were having some problems with people breaking in. I mean, is there any possibility of maybe getting a little camera?
I was wondering the same thing about that.
Like those deer hunting cameras and...
I think they actually already work with them.
Okay. So, we can catch somebody who's doing it.
I wonder how the cell service is out there, because there's trail cameras now that you can use your, uh, telephone, your phone service.
Yeah, the DNR's looking at outline, did you see that article? So, the DNR is saying, if you go out, if, if that shows up on your camera and you go out and shoot the deer on the same day, you're in trouble. I don't know how they're gonna monitor this, but if you see the deer like the night before and you're shooting it, a day or two after, that's okay. Cherry just read an article about that.
And I've, I've had that, a couple of years ago, where a six-point buck I'd seen on my camera. I shot it opening day, and of course, after the fact, it's like, I wonder if that's the one that was on my camera in a similar location, wasn't that exact spot, but it was probably within a couple hundred feet of it. So, it was like, and then, I got, I got a strange feeling. I don't know how to describe it, because it's like, I've got a camera of that deer alive, and now I've killed it. Sorry, you're sharing that.
Dave, did you say you had two questions? I, uh, I only heard one.
Two questions.
I was going to just make a comment about the proposed childcare bill, too. It's, uh, the solution at the state right now is to just increase reimbursement rates, which does nothing to solve the systemic problem why there's no more childcare businesses around, so...
Well, they kinda overregulated it.
Yeah. I'll, I'll be chatting with hopefully some legislators ears on that next week, so...
So, here, and here's another one, so, transportation for people that need medical? The state is looking at, at lessening regulation, and yet, from Prime West's standpoint, that is the highest fraud level there is, that they, when they check out for fraud, waste, and abuse, where the state is pretty much saying, "We'll just submit and we'll pay it." So, that'd be another area to talk about. Excuse me.
Yeah, getting the right balance on regulation and
Right.
is, is, is probably the problem.
I've always argued, you know, in many instances, reducing regulation will do more good than throwing money at it.
Right.
In a lot, you know, a lot of cases, not all, but in many, because that's the reason people aren't going into the daycare business, because the business model's broken.
Yeah.
We've discussed that at HLDC till we're blue in the face, it's, it's, the model is broken. You can throw money at, and money, throw money, 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 you're not fixing the underlying problem why people aren't starting daycare businesses.
And, and when you think about what they're using the surplus dollars for, but then what happens in the years that there aren't dollars, and then they're gonna look to the counties to fund whatever they've mandated? That's the other ongoing problem.
And it's a bad precedent, because then it makes, what, anybody who goes into that business now becomes dependent on the state for the revenue.
Right.
Rather than making the model successful where it's taken care of locally. And the market takes care of it, so that's the flaw with all that, long-term. But that's where we're at with a lot of that stuff.
Part of it is, is philosophy difference of big government versus little government, so...
And I was happy to see on the energy thing, at least they're starting to talk about hydro and nuclear more. Maybe they're starting to realize that their plans don't work without the proper amount of base electricity to...
So, I had read, you know, that, that the average person's electric bill will go up thirty-eight hundred dollars a year, you know, the year? I was thinking that was the first year, I reread the article yesterday, that's per year. So, next year, my electricity bill will go up thirty-eight hundred, then the next year, it's gonna go up an additional thirty-eight hundred. Our electric bill has already increased greatly this year, how can it keep, keep going up and up and up every single year?
Okay, we ready to adjourn? Move you to adjourn, Mozen, you second?
I'll second.
All right, we're adjourned.
I kinda thought we were.
No, no, I said...